Robbie, can you? Testing. 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 Doesn't seem to be on. Hey Robbie, I don't, I don't think we've got the. Testing. Thank you. This regular meeting of the planning commission is called order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First order of business is approval of the agenda. Do we have any discussion or does someone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda stands approved. Next order of business, the approval of the minutes for the October commission meeting. Do I have a, are there any questions, discussion, or? Then do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No. Motion carries. The minutes are approved, the minutes of the October 12th. Regular meeting. Now going to call to order the first public hearing that's on the agenda. Which is the recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone approximately 210 acres from the RL rural district to the HMMU mixed use hamlet district. The property is on two parcels between Campbellton Redwine Road and Caps Ferry Road. It is known in the materials that have been posted as a Rosa Grove. We're going to start by reading the rules for the public hearing, and these rules will apply to, we have, we have three public hearings tonight, and these are going to apply to each one of the public hearings. The chair is going to allow each side an equal opportunity to the floor with established time limits for this public hearing. In a minute, Ms. Witcher will, I'll ask you about that. In this case, each side will then have a specified number of minutes to present their case. The city clerk, Ms. Witcher, will keep track of the time and will inform each side when the allotted time has expired. The clerk may also advise speakers of the remaining time for their side. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to one of the items that's in the here, subject of the hearing, you must fill out with a public, a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if that's applicable, before beginning the presentation. The applicant, if the applicant chooses, and all those speaking in support of the application will speak first. The applicant may choose to reserve time for rebuttal following the presentation by those opposed. Those opposing the issue will speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed time to rebut the, any final remarks made by the applicant. Speakers shall address all comments to the planning commission. During the public hearing, members of the planning commission shall listen and to the presentations made by all those who speak. No action or comment on their part is in order until the chair declares the public comment period of the hearing closed. Following the presentation by the applicants, those speaking in support and the, and those opposing at the chair will close the public comment session portion of the hearing, and then there will be discussion and a decision on one of the types of actions that are allowed the planning commission under the code. So let us, let us begin with the first item, which I have read into the record so far, and let's start with staff, Mr. Morton or Ms. Chandler, whoever's making the presentation, if you can give us an introductory presentation on it.
That's right. So just some of the basic facts of this, this proposal. By the way, your, the memo, the packet says first read and no action. That's of course incorrect artifact of the previous version. The proposal is to rezone 210.72 acres from RL to HMMU. The property is between Campbellton Redwine Road and Caps Ferry Road, just a little south of where those, where those two roads intersect. Campbellton Redwine Road, of course, is a state highway. The main entrances are proposed along Campbellton Redwine Road. Those will require GDOT's approval. There is one road that connects to Caps Ferry Road. However, that is proposed to be used only by emergency vehicles and bicycle pedestrians, probably horses, but not, not regular, regular vehicle traffic. In the proposed conditions, you received some proposed new conditions. Number 11 covers that specifically, and that was agreed to by, by the applicant, as was number 12, the other new condition, which is related to a cemetery that's on Campbellton Redwine Road, just to the north of the subject property and extends a little bit at least onto the subject property. The applicant has agreed to further study of the, the extent of that cemetery, and that's again written in as proposed condition number 12. The plan proposes 210 residential units, which is one per acre, just like a regular base, base numbers for a hamlet. 8,450 square feet of retail restaurant commercial space, a pair of amenities buildings, a barn, some stables, and an outdoor riding arena. These things, aside, aside from most of the residential units are clustered toward the Campbellton Redwine entrances, where the residential units are townhomes, and then cottage and estate lots extend back into the, toward the east into the, the bulk of the property. The property also shows quite a little bit of trails, trail network for use of the residence, presumably the horses staying in the stables there. And finally, there is a third additional condition that's been proposed. The applicant's package indicated that there are wetlands on the property, and that condition is proposed to, to have them properly delineated anywhere where development might, might affect them so that they can properly stay away from it, or if they need to get it permitted through the army board, of course, they would, would be required to do that. However, I will point out that the UDC requires sensitive lands, including wetlands to be incorporated into the open space. So that will be something that we'll have to get a look at certainly by the time they, they preliminary plat. That's the basics.
Thank you. Ms. Witcher, how many come, or if you, if you're handling them, Chan, Ms. Chan?
There are two in favor and one opposed.
Let's go ahead and allot 15 minutes per side. It may be too much, but let's go ahead and allot that if that's okay with the commission, 15 minutes aside. In that case, let's begin with the applicant, if the applicant chooses to make a presentation.
Either or.
Hello. Larry Cardnall, 1055 Hall, Northwest. Hello, everyone. I'm here as the applicant for Rosa Grove. I work with the Allen Morris Company, and the Allen Morris Company is the owner of the site. We're a 65-year-old family home. We've got offices in both South Florida and Atlanta. I sit in the Atlanta office and, and work on projects in the vicinity. So with this one, you know, we've owned the plant since 2018, and it's something that we've been excited to sort of watch, that we've just run to the vault, and we think now is the right time to to start planning what, what our development will look like, which is why we're here. And what I would say just generally about that our application is that we want to create an environment that, that fits in with the fabric of Chodouchee Hills. Right? We want it to feel rural in nature, but then, of course, we want to deliver something that is, that is inspiring and interesting and and sort of as you get behind that 150-foot tree buffer, even under the marks of intrigue and interesting. And to that, I will, I will let Jessica Hill.
Find the details of the project.
Robbie, would you mind going to the side? All right. It's, good evening. My name is Jessica Hill. My business address is 600 Peachtree Street, and I am the applicant's counsel. You can see on the, the screen here, we have the site plan that's included in the packet. As Mr. Morton noted, we have 210 units. That is, we're not having any TDRs. We don't have any variances. It's a combination of townhomes and three different types of lots. There are 75 townhomes, which you can see planned left clustered around Campbellton Redwine, and then there are homes that are between a quarter of an acre and half acre lots. And again, you can see how they are clustered to avoid the streams and the topography. There's a, basically a Y and a T-shaped stream that bisect the property, which have created the clustering that we have. Some things to note about this property, we will have 71% open space, so that's 149 acres of open space. So we're very happy about that. This is in the preferred village, so this is consistent with the density and scope of development that is proposed. When we started out with the site plan, there were homes that were provided along the Caps Ferry Road frontage, and there was actually a second entrance along the Caps Ferry Road frontage. And through conversations with various stakeholders, one of the entrances disappeared, and the other entrance became, as noted in the conditions, for emergency vehicles only, and then bike, ped, horses. There's no intent to pave Caps Ferry Road. There's no intent for this project to exit or enter from Caps Ferry Road based on the proposal before you tonight. Something else that has been done is the homes that were along the Caps Ferry Road frontage. You can see how there's two little teeth that stick out. Those have been removed and pulled back to, again, try and cluster them away from Caps Ferry and also cluster them a little bit better together. We also have been in contact with the cemetery descendants. The property immediately to the north along Campbellton Redwine has a small cemetery that is visible from Campbellton Redwine. And our survey does note that there's a, I think, a 2.5-foot encroachment. And the Allen Morris Company is certainly amenable to one doing the, the geo, the survey that's required, so the ground penetrating radar to determine that location and provide access to the descendants so that they can access it. Again, they can access it from Campbellton Redwine, but if you're looking at the plan, it's in the top left, within the 150-foot buffer where there's nothing proposed now anyway. We have reviewed the staff's recommendation and all 13 conditions as amended tonight and are amenable to all of those. I will reserve any time for rebuttal. Thank you.
We have one in opposition, Quincy Jones.
There were no more?
No, no more.
In favor?
No more in favor.
There's 10 minutes, 50 seconds.
Yes, thank you.
It's Quincy Jones.
Hi, it's, my name is Quincy Jones, and I'm in 7245 Cats Ferry Road. If you look, I'm the blank white spot. That's my property, so it's, it's surrounding me all the way around on the property. And my concern is the dirt road. The dirt road is a very narrow road, if you've ever been on it. And cars now will go around one curve. You have to be very careful because if you go around the curve on Cats Ferry, the ditches are real deep. And sometimes people don't like to share the road. So that, that's my major concern. And on the property on the left-hand side, and I think that's where you're going to be putting the road to come out. You can see on that curve where it touches on the property, on my property line. And it's, it's real close to it, but it curves in where the trails are. And it's right on the where you can see it on the, on the map. And, you know, I knew that something was going to come around me because, you know, there was so much vacant land. I just didn't realize that it's going to be like something like Serenby with all the little cottages. So I'm, I'm wanting, if they would do it, is to put a fence around their property so that I won't have horses coming on my property or bicyclers. And I don't know that they'll have four-wheelers. And, but I've been out there for 50 years, so, and I don't want to move. And the I don't know if the ones that own the property know that there is granite that runs all through that property. I have two wells. One went dry, but the one I had to have drilled, if they could go down 135 foot, and they hit granite. The 35-foot well that went dry, it hit granite. They couldn't go any further. So I, and my house, I found out, my house is on granite. So I've already lost two TVs from the electricity. You know, when we have lightning storms, it hit the house and got the TVs. And I don't know if they're aware of this or not. But I'm one of these that does it speak up at times? Oh, and on the road, would the, has anybody went out and surveyed the road to see if a fire truck or any of that could come down that road? Yeah, that, that's a main concern because if, if a big truck comes down that dirt road, you either have to stop or back up because you can't pass in one section of it. You've got ditches on either side, and it's not little ditches. You, if you get on the side, you're going to go into that ditch and have to be pulled out. So tho- those are my concern about the, the property and all. And as I said, I would like to have a fence around it and any of the proposed, or I, I have learned, if it's not written on paper, then it's no good. And I'd like to have something in writing on what they're going to propose to do about the property around me. And I think that's oh, when, whenever they, if they have to build, if they have to do blasting on that rock, how is that going to affect my wells? Especially the one that the main well is 135 feet down. If you, if they take and blow it up, how, how is it going to affect me? Will I lose my, my water? So I think that's, that's all that I want to say, you know, and and mainly you know, I need a buffer put around, you know, if they're right on that line now, they need to move off of my line. And then have a buffer because my house is almost directly in the, the middle of the, the narrowest part. So that's my concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Was that the only opposition?
Yes, sir.
Does the applicant wish to address any of these comments?
Give me just a second.
It'll be much faster than 10 minutes. I promise.
Just in case.
And Robbie, if you could put the site plan back up, if that's possible. And thank you, Ms. Jones, for your comments. All of them are well taken. A couple of things. One, there is not going to be any access from the project to Caps Ferry, aside from emergency vehicles. And emergency vehicles will also have access from Campbellton Redwine. So I just want to make sure that's abundantly clear. It is just a secondary access to the project, if that is the better way to access it from an emergency perspective. And I assume that the fire truck can make it down Caps Ferry, since there are homes on Caps Ferry today, that that is how, the only way that they are to be able to be accessed. With respect to fencing, the applicant would be amenable to providing a fence around Ms. Joan, the perimeter of Ms. Jones's property. We appreciate that there could be an impact, given the location of that, and are certainly happy to work with her about providing fencing. There is 150-foot buffer. So want to make that clear. We certainly can work with that, but there is 150-foot buffer plus a 10-foot improvement setback from all of the property lines. We are aware that there is granite on the property, and obviously we'll have to manage that through the construction process. You know, to the extent that any blasting is done, that's done by a company that will survey and manage what, what sort of impacts might be, and obviously will not impact the well. But again, we're happy to coordinate with Ms. Jones on, on that, if and when that happens in the future. I got so excited when I was presenting this. I didn't show you the, the rendering, so I want to go ahead, Robbie, if you'll flip to the next slide. We had a lot of fun with the, with our renderer with this because I couldn't understand why we wanted to show something that didn't actually show the project. So this is the view of the project from Caps Ferry Road, from the southern entrance. You can see the tree buffer, the entrance. And it was a little bit like a lift-the-flap book. If anybody has kids, that they kept wanting to lift the flap and show what was underneath. If you can go to the next slide. This is an aerial view, again, taken from Caps Ferry Road. You can see Caps Ferry at the, kind of at the bottom. You can see the trees. The clearing area is behind the 150-foot buffer, and that's where you have the riding arena, and then flanking it on either sides are the stables and the barn and an amenity center right in front of it. There is a small retail component which is tucked behind the barn on the right, between the townhomes and the barn, and then another amenity center with the pool. But you can see the, the curvature of the townhomes and then how the, the single-family homes and the single-family lots extend through. And then if you want to go to the next slide, Robbie. This is a representative image of the townhomes. This is early design, but this is giving you a feel of what they might look like. And if we can go to the next one. Just some representative designs for purposes of the single-family homes. They're, they're not intended to all be the same, but this is an idea of the type of architecture. So with that, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to close the public comment portion of this hearing, and we'll move to discussion and any decision on action at this point among the planning commission members. I, I want to start with one question. I didn't quite understand the comments about whether, where the, it came close, the curve of the property came close. Did, did you understand? It looked like you all understood what the public concern was or what the?
If you can put the site plan back up. Robbie. You want to?
Yeah, just speaking generally to it, I, I believe it's, it's the trail that's kind of meandering through, not the improved road itself. So if you look at the, the, Ms. Jones's parcel, there's kind of the meandering trail around it. I believe that's the
That's the trail.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So it's not, that's not cars. That's not motorized traffic. Sure.
Well, I'll ask, I'm going to ask Ms. Jones then, is, is that the curve coming close to your property that you were concerned about? All right, thank you. That answers that question for me, so I'm going to open it up for the planning commission, other people who may want to have comments or discuss or questions for the applicant or for staff.
Regarding the fence that they discussed, is that something that you would be amenable to including in a condition?
Mr. Morton, it's not, it's not a, one of the conditions. We'll come back to the conditions in a minute, but it's not one of the commissions. And I think if I heard correctly, the applicant, counselor for the applicant said that they had reviewed the three new conditions, and I want to come back to that, but those are acceptable. So you'd be suggesting, do we need another condition regarding fencing? Is that?
Yeah. I think it would be a nice gesture.
We could add one. We might want to get some understanding of type of fence, where it goes to put in there, but that's easy conversation, I hope.
Absolutely. The applicant would be happy to have a condition. I say happy. The applicant would be amenable to having a condition provide for fencing. I'm assuming it doesn't require a variance and that fencing is allowed in that, in that location, but yes, we're happy to provide a fence.
Is, is there some, I, I looked at the topography and the layout, and I kind of know the property you know, in person. And I wonder, is, I couldn't figure out why that bridle trailer, whatever it is, was drawn right onto her property line. There didn't, there didn't seem to be any topographical reason to encroach so closely on a neighbor. Is it, is there a reason?
We can have the civil engineer sharpen their pencil a bit on that and see how they can move it out. As you can tell from the topo, there is, there certainly is some topo and streams to avoid, but we certainly can look at moving it as far as practical pull away. It just was intended to be a perimeter trail to maximize the amount of trail available.
Right. I was, I guess I was looking at the topo. It seemed as if, it seemed as if it was drawn to be as far out on the rim of the property rather than with the topography in mind, and it seemed like it could easily be moved further in. And so I just wanted to ask the question because I think it bears on her concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're just talking about that one arc that touches the line, right? Well, that's the closest of several, so I just wanted to ask.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Lindsay? Okay.
Do we have other questions?
No, I, I wondered if you had other questions.
Well, I, I wanted to ask about, well, there's a, there's a contradiction in the package about, obviously, there's no word on water and sewer, but that, and so I'm curious about that and how that fits into approvals for for a site that relies on infrastructure that's not there and is miles away. And then in the Kimley Horn package, that indicates using groundwater. And, and I wasn't aware until the public comment about the well drying out. And so I, so I, I wonder what are the implications if you are forced to use groundwater?
Oh, we should have brought our civil engineer. We do, we do appreciate, and Larry, if you want to come up here and answer anything, I can't answer, but we do appreciate that there is not water and sewer service sufficient currently to the property. We were, we were hoping that the studio would maybe make that a little bit closer and be ahead of time to this project because obviously that would bring things a little bit closer to the site. You know, the options obviously are Douglas County or Fulton slash City of Atlanta, and then there's a third option for onsite, which is what the civil engineer originally was thinking, but the, the shorter answer is we don't know. Obviously, to build the project and to get permits, we have to show how we're going to have water and sewer. So this project can't actually function until we, we have that, but we, we don't know at this point.
Mr. Morton, that's correct, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah, that they will need to demonstrate to staff
That's correct.
Before building permits, well, probably before then.
Yeah, land assistance, great.
Okay.
And then the nature of the roadways in the development, I couldn't, maybe it was just oversight on my part, but I couldn't tell if the, what you refer to as the improved roads, as opposed to the bridle path, which I assume will be, what, gravel or something?
Gravel or mulch.
And then what about the roadways? Will they be gravel as well, or will they be fully paved on the interior?
The intent is that the roads are paved with the exception of the extension, and if we can put the site plan back up, Robbie. There's the, the, the extension that heads out to Caps Ferry that is not for vehicles. That's just for that's just for emergency vehicles. That would be gravel. But the balance of the roads within the project are proposed to be paved. Yeah. So basically where the houses stop on the right, you can see it, it labels it if you can blow it up big enough, but it labels it as gravel.
That spur out there on the right side is gravel and the rest is paved.
Yes, the dark gray is paved.
And then you guys want to jump in here?
You go ahead.
So paved. The entrances, when you, when you showed your renderings, I believe you intended to say Campbellton Redwine as opposed to Caps Ferry in the, in, in the entrance. And so I appreciated the, the low-key, a lot of people around here cite the near invisibility of Serenby as a great model for, you know, that you, you know, if you don't know where it is, you can, you could drive right by it, and that, that seeing that seems appropriate. I wonder if you can speak to your, you know, given the density and given the, the equestrian stuff that's out front near Campbellton Redwine, if you could speak to your intention to comply with our night sky ordinances. What is the extent of the exterior lighting, you know, commercial lighting? I've, I've been around equestrian facilities that blew about a million watts of light onto neighboring property. equestrian facilities that blew about a million watts of light onto neighboring properties, and I certainly you know, that certainly doesn't comply, so I wonder if you could kind of speak to that kind of compliance with our night sky.
Sure, Larry, I'm going to let you take the conversation about the equestrian component.
Yeah, sure. So we would certainly be compliant, the intent here is to have something that's in amenity to the residents of the the development, so it's not going to be a large scale bringing out of town trucks in roadshow type, type facility, so to that point, we could keep it less than the major, major production. If that answers your question.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the, you know, the density of that front, you know, that that front element that's on Campbellton Redwine Road, when we were talking to the, you know, you all mentioned the movie studio in the hope of somehow getting infrastructure from them, if that comes to pass, the there were a lot of concerns about how much light is going to come off a light industrial facility over there. And you've got then a pretty dense neighborhood that's going to require nighttime lighting and so on and so.
Sure, yeah, so just to speak to that, you know, I think the type of resident who would live there would appreciate the night sky ordinance and the the ability to live among nature where you can view an unobstructed kind of skyline, so that's something that we would want to provide for the residents.
All the rest of mine was about the buffers and the neighborhood.
Go ahead, oh, you know, you've covered it, we've covered it, okay. Thank you, let's talk just a minute about the conditions. On the, in the packet that's been out for public comment, there are ten basic questions with a few subparts to them. They have been out for public review, they've been, the commission has had an opportunity to review them. And unless anyone has a question about them, I would say we do not need to read into this record other than by reference to what the packet is of those ten primary conditions, however, not everybody will have heard about the additional conditions, the three additional conditions, and then a possible fourth fencing condition. So, Mr. Morton, I'd ask you or Ms. Chandler to read these new conditions that do not appear in the packet that I understand the applicant is amenable to, has agreed to. If you would, please.
Okay, I'd be happy to read them, so there were ten, as you say in the packet, number eleven is vehicular access to and from the property along Caps Ferry Road frontage shall be limited to emergency vehicles only. Bicycle and pedestrian access shall be permitted along Caps Ferry Road frontage of the property. Just as discussed, number twelve, as part of permitting for the development of the property, the owner shall provide the city with a ground penetrating radar survey to evidence the limits of any encroachment of the cemetery abutting the property to the north. The development of the property shall not disturb the existing cemetery, the owner shall allow access by the descendants of the descendants to any portions of the existing cemetery on the subject property for maintenance and visitation of the existing cemetery. And then number thirteen, before approval of the preliminary plat, any wetlands at or near the site affected or potentially affected by the project shall be delineated. The preliminary plat and the final plat shall be engineered such that all wetlands, stream buffers and other environmentally sensitive land remain in the required protected open space consistent with UDC section five dash three dot H dot four. And then finally, the fence, I think we'll want to get a little bit of detail, but say some, it will say something to the effect of the owner, I don't know if you want to wordsmith it right now, the owner will provide a fence at the perimeter of the address of the property, probably some what height and type of fence, whether it's privacy fence or, I don't know exactly what what you all are thinking. And then the question of whether the fence is going to go, which side of the property line the fence is going to go on should be spelled out there as well.
Thank you, counselor, unless you want to try to draft the condition right now, you don't need to, I think we can handle this by reference to it. But I do have a couple of questions, on the cemetery, just so everyone knows, so there's no confusion, it is indicated in your packet. There's perhaps you can show that in the northwest corner, there's about two and a half acres, maybe a headstone. And you're going to do GPR, ground penetrating radar to identify, and if you might want to for the public, you might want to show or where that is
Certainly.
on a diagram.
Certainly, Robbie, if you can pull it up, it's two point five feet is the approach. So that's why we think the hundred and fifty foot buffer is certainly.
It will be in the buffer.
That's correct, and it is, if you're looking at this plan, it is the top left, so it's along Campbellton Redwine is where the cemetery is located, and if you drive down Campbellton Redwine, you can, you can see it. There's, I don't know how many graves, but there's maybe twenty, thirty or so. So it's just a small little enclave of a cemetery. And the applicant has spoken with the Walker family, which are the descendants of the decedents that are there. And is coordinating, providing access.
And would that be pursuant to an easement, or what is your thinking right now?
Well, you know, the Walker family doesn't own the property to the north, so we were debating whether it was an easement or it's probably be more of like a right of entry or license. But obviously for cemetery purposes, so not to go on there and hunt or do something else on the property, but yes, they are amenable to allowing them to continue to visit their loved ones.
Provided that there actually is your GPR.
Yes.
And I would, I would like to make a comment, a little bit of an explanatory comment about the wetlands. You had United Consulting do a wetlands survey, not a delineation, but a survey, and they found two wetlands features kind of on the east portion to linear lines that move into the confluence or the stream. And it looks like from this drawing that some of those, some of the construction may actually encroach upon those wetlands. You haven't done the delineation, so it's a little early to tell, but that's the genesis of that concern, okay? Right, yes, sir.
Point out the survey that you're looking at is from nineteen seventy-two, of course, conditions may have changed, but that'll be a part of that process.
Correct, correct. Is there any other discussion from commission members? We have certain things that the commission can do under the code, we can approve. We can approve as recommended by the staff with conditions. And in this case amended conditions, revised conditions, we could deny, or we can recommend deferral. Is, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
So. Yeah. So the motion would be to approve, and this is again the first of the public hearings, it's an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone approximately two hundred and ten acres, so that's the, that's the motion for approval. Is there?
With, with recommended and additional.
As revised, with, with the staff recommended and revised conditions that we talked about, and one of those conditions being to be determined regarding fencing. So shall we restate? Ms. Witcher, do you have? You good with that? All right, do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those, all those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We have already read the we'll move to the second public hearing, we've already read the rules, they apply as well. This is a recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone two hundred and sixty-five acres from RL Rural to HMMU Mixed Use Hamlet District. It is two hundred and sixty-five acres on a single parcel located between Cochrane Mill Road, Creel Road and Cedar Grove Road by Creative Land Co. Now, this is the second public hearing we've had on this, we had a public hearing on this in October, and we, the commission at that point voted to defer it until today's hearing, so do we have comments?
Sorry.
Have five in favor. And one opposed, I think maybe was this the one that you wanted to, and not the other, the one initially added? Yes.
So we have.
We have five in favor.
I think we again can perhaps do this with fifteen minutes per side, does that sound acceptable with the commission? What then, Ms. Witcher, we will, Ms. Gallagher, was that? Ms. Witcher, fifteen minutes aside then, and so let's begin with the applicant, I will say the applicant has already made a presentation on this at the last public hearing, it is within the applicant's discretion about whether or not they want to do a presentation. It always is, but if they want to do a presentation on this one, and it appears they do, so.
You want me to present basic?
I am sorry, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
I'll be very brief, because we've all been through this.
Thank you, bye.
Yes, yes, that's right, so this, this will include both the rezoning and the special use permit, there's a proposed special use permit for a hotel within the same.
Hang on a second. The public hearing on this item is now open. Mr. Morton, would you give us an introduction?
Thanks, yeah, I'll be brief, I know that you all, you all have heard this before, the proposal is for two hundred and sixty-five acre mixed use hamlet on property between Cochrane Mill Road, Creel Road and Cedar Grove Road. The to the east across Cochrane Mill Road is the City of South Fulton, there are a couple of City of South Fulton lots that are on the west side of Cochrane Mill Road also that directly abut the proposed the property. They're showing the required hundred and fifty foot buffer throughout. But where they face the City of South Fulton, that buffer is not required, but they're still showing a fifty foot buffer along there, they're showing all the required open space and civic space, they've nicely clustered the lots, leaving uninterrupted open space on the west part of the property. They're proposing just over six hundred residential units, which will require them to use the TDR program. And the project has been through a DRI process, and you have in your packet the, the results of the DRI process. The recommendations were really just about entrance improvements. Oh, and back to the the TDRs with the use of the TDR, the effective preservation ratio goes from the normally required seventy percent up to eighty-five percent because of the number of TDRs they're planning on buying.
And, and Mr. Morton, is it correct to say that the, as I remember, the planning commission had just received the NOD?
At the, at the October meeting, that's right, they had just received the NOD that day, just some hours before the hearing. So it wasn't really enough time for anyone to absorb its contents. The contents, because we had received a draft, were already incorporated into the conditions, but, but the actual final NOD had not yet been received. I should also mention the hotel, hotel, of course, is behind the buffers, it's inside the, the hamlet, surrounded on three sides by open space, so to the south side, it would be it would address the other parts of the development. But that's, that's it.
So let me cover that as well, that is the next public hearing, which is on the special use permit. Now, that has been handled in the packet and also at the city council meeting as one, together with this rezoning. So is it of the commission's mind that we can handle both at the same time here? I think we can. All right, we're going to open the public comment period now for this project that will include the rezoning and the special use permit. Thanks, sir. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you, my name is Ryan Snodgrass, fourteen forty-seven Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. I am the applicant's representative, I've been her land planner for the past few years on this project, and I, I know that the, the commission is familiar with the site, as, as we've already stated, we've had a formal presentation already. But I did just want to kind of reiterate a few, a few items and let you know what we've been up to since, since we were last before you last month. You know, I'll say that over the last thirty days, the applicant has continued her public outreach meeting with any citizens who are inquiring with additional questions. And so those have been taken with, with great success to ease any concerns that may have still been out there. Also, last week, because it was already advertised, as you may know, we met with the city council. So we made a presentation before Mayor Reed and council. At that point, there was no opposition put on the, on the record for that meeting, so we were pleased about that and also pleased with the amount of people we, that were, came out in support of the project, which I believe there are also here today, so look forward to hearing those comments. So as you know, of course, the Creative Land Group is proposing the site plan that you see in front of you with the core of the development there in the highlighted area with the initial phase being that of twenty units. The, the second phase within that core would then be expanded to include a mix of townhouses, flats, as well as single family dwellings. All the design intent for the development as a whole, as it continues to phase out, as you see in more of the bubbled areas, if you will. The design intent would then carry through to those future phases, including to the future site of the inn as we have it identified on our site. So we're very excited and would, would love to talk about more of the design detail, but I know it's already been on the record, so we'll we'll just let it rest at that and save any questions and happy to go into detail, should it be requested during the Q and A or rebuttal part of the, this session, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Chandler?
Jeff Brock.
Good evening, I spoke before this council a month ago, and as you I don't want to rehash all of it, but just to remind you that I, my family's been in the Cedar Grove area of Chattahoochee Hills for six generations, I've lived on Creel Road at forty-nine fifty for the last thirty-three years, I've lived on Creel Road. I'm very familiar with this property, probably more so than, than anybody else. I have spent numerous hours talking to Lauren Gervich, I think she's assembled a A-one team. I think she's doing her best to play by all the rules. I happen to like the rules of Chattahoochee Hills and all the covenants. Having lived here most of my life, I don't like the surrounding areas outside of Chattahoochee Hills and all the warehouses, apartments and and uncontrolled development, if you will, that, that is in those areas. I, I think that you guys, and the rest of the people in charge of Chattahoochee Hills have done a great job setting us up for success. Change and development's coming. And it's important for us to, to keep our rural lifestyle as, as much as we can. I think it's important to minimize the impact of all these developments, and I think you guys have done a good job. I'd also like to say that I've heard a lot of talk within my neighborhood, my neighbors, people in the community about the hotel. I personally support the hotel, I have stayed at the end in Serenby, and it's not a motel six. And what I promise that, you know, by understanding of what Ms. Gervich has planned is not a Holiday Inn, so that's, that's what everybody needs to know, and once again, I commend you guys, I support the project, and I hope you guys will pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Charles Hayes.
My name is Charles Hayes, I live at one twenty Nomorrow Court. In addition to my previous comments that I made at the last planning commission meeting, I would like to add the additional comments based on additional information that I have received and read. I'm in favor of the Creative Land Hamlet based on the recommendations and commission presented by the ARC and Greta. The ARC report stated, the project is strongly aligned with policy recommendations as presented in the Atlanta Regional Plan. Whereas the Greta report stated, the DRI plan of development as proposed is approved subject to conditions. So based on my previous reasons that I've stated before, and based on the, the reasons that I've just stated, it is my desire that the planning commission will approve this project. Thanks, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Jonathan Cunningham.
Jonathan Cunningham.
Jonathan Cunningham, seven-three-seven-five Caps Ferry Road. My wife and I moved our family here a little over a year ago to Chattahoochee Hills. This is our dream town for a few reasons. One, the natural beauty that we all love here in Chattahoochee Hills reminds us where we grew up, and we wanted that for our three daughters. We were sick of the sprawl from the overdevelopment where we had lived previously. So when we had researched Chattahoochee Hills before moving here. We learned about the zoning ordinances and we almost couldn't believe it. This was a town where our elected leaders had found ways to protect the feeling that makes this place so special. Because stopping development entirely isn't possible, having the right kind of development is incredibly important. And when I saw the creative land code development plans, I knew this was the right kind of development for our town. This developer is respecting our ordinances by abiding by all rules and asking for any variances. Lauren Gervage is taking the time to get to know the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills and talking to us personally about her development. I've seen the quality of Lauren's work, and because of that, I know this will be a beautiful extension of our community we could all be proud of. Support the creative land code development as well as their very unique inn with micro cabins, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ellen Smith, you want to hold off? Just to answer questions, okay.
Are those the all the?
All in favor.
Okay.
And.
Just tell you, there's uh seven minutes and fifty-five seconds left.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh there's one in opposition, J.C. Milk, McElreeve.
Good evening. Uh thank you for your time. I'm J.C. McElreeve. I live at uh ten-four-twenty River Town Road. Um I come in respectful opposition, and I believe that the rules that apply to us as residents are unequal to those uh. Coming to build these large establishments. My family has owned forty-plus acres for over sixty years. Um why are we allowed to build houses um and hamlets and such right on top of one another, but we're not allowed to build? Right on our own family land unless we have seventeen acres of to one house. Um how is this fair? This is extremely unfair and to those who have been living here their whole lives and hotels. With more people comes more accidents, more crime, more traffic accidents. Um I personally enjoy the peace and quiet that comes with living in a rural area. And with a hotel, it feels like it might could turn into a constant tomorrow world. Do y'all remember Tomorrow World? I live right down the road from it. Extremely loud, noisy, loud thumping. It was a good time. And for the love of everything, can we please stop calling these units and flats? When we know they're called apartments. Thank you for choosing rural.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Um would the applicant like to respond? To any of these comments? Probably not to the pros, but.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. I'm Ellen Smith. I have the pleasure of representing the applicant. And ten-seventy-five Peachtree Street. Uh just a quick comment um with respect to hotels. Uh this is an inn. There's already one that is similar sized uh at Serenby. Less than a hundred units or or a hundred units, and that's rooms, not flats or apartments. Um for the hotel, but also just a timing consideration. The hotel won't be here until phase three. Uh as Mike mentioned, it's surrounded uh by three sides of significant buffer. And really in the middle of the property. So it's a destination hotel. This isn't a hotel or an inn that is. Providing, you know, business travelers with an overnight stay in the middle of an urban setting. These are people that are going to come, stay in the community because they have family who live nearby. And their home might not be big enough to host that Thanksgiving dinner that's coming up next week. So they're looking for a place for their family to come, stay, and be a destination. Uh happy to address questions with respect to traffic. Um but also just want to let you know. Uh we have reviewed the conditions, the conditions that were finalized since we were here before you. And agree to all of those and appreciate your time and consideration of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments on that are?
Yes, sir.
Right. We'll close the public comment period of this uh hearing um and open it up for. Commission discussion, questions for the staff, questions for the applicant. I I'll I'll start out. Um the hotel uh has raised, and this is for a special use permit for the hotel. Um ca- for the applicant or um. How would you describe the level of the hotel? I understand it's destination, but is this, what was it, a holiday inn or a motel six? Mr. Brock?
Neither. Um it it the level of the hotel in terms of density or in terms of. It it's a boutique. It boutique experience. Uh I think Ryan can confirm less than three stories in any building, two stories max. Um and rooms spread out, so not entirely in one building, really a boutique destination experience. So no, neither holiday inn, holiday inn express.
We'll call it an upscale or a mid-level.
Absolutely luxury.
Four, three, four, four, five stars, something like that. Well, five stars tough, but.
Four or five stars, yes.
Um thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Can you?
Go ahead.
Because this is change change. I I like I recall the word micro cabin being used. Can you? Explain a little bit to people what we're actually looking at at this hotel?
Sure. I'm gonna let Ryan do that.
Um so so as Ellen was saying, um the. For a visual, so the the inn is is right in the upper northern area of the future phase three here. It's about a ten-acre site that that we have it planned on. Um and that includes with looking at gravel road access and so forth, so not all solid surface, very much rural intended. Style in at this location. Um around the 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 primary buildings, which would be the uh the common hall, if you will. A single building that's two stories with uh rooms. And is then surrounded by those micro cabins, and I think that's the the term you were bringing up. Where where might those be? We have a small cluster in this concept plan just to the south of that primary core. As well as a small cluster just to the north of that core. And that core, again, is that. Those two uh buildings that I spoke of, as well as amenities such as the pool. Um and stuff that is expected to be with with the inn. And again, at the concept level, that's where we are right now.
I have a question. So by micro cottage um cabin, is it something like a, just a single, how many square feet, like luxury cottage?
Oh, yes. Um like three, three-fifty, four-hundred square feet. I have the exact number and somewhere in here, happy to dig that out, but we're in that range. Yeah.
And how many of those?
Right here on my first page. Perfect. Uh we're looking at around uh thirty uh of those are included in that. Um and then uh for the, for those primary structures, the the they're around um, excuse me. So yeah, thirty cabins. I have my my bullets out of order here. Thirty cabins there, and then. Those are around the three-fifty, four-hundred square feet.
And so is it?
Each. Total, yeah, total of a hundred rooms.
So a hundred.
But of those, there of those hundred rooms, there's thirty cabins. Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
So I'm just to clarify, I don't know how to talk about hotels, the. Hundred key, hundred.
Hundred, a hundred keys. Within those hundred keys, there's thirty micro cabins. That are included in that hundred key. They're part of the inn.
Thirty cabins and then seventy rooms in the hotel, just to clarify.
Yes, that's correct. Apologies for that. I think we're getting some.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. And then what are the other amenities at the hotel?
Uh let's.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so looking at some um at the conceptual level right now, uh within that that court. That the three primary buildings uh make up, uh looking at a pool amenity uh for the hotel. Um possible soft kind of yard kind of games, very, very low-key, relaxed. Kind of chill, high-end destination type place. As one of those buildings is, we're looking, we've been calling it the barn, if you will. Which is simply just a enclosed space for a gathering that could hold up to maybe a hundred people. So again, very much small scale uh looking uh for for this project here.
Does that imply the uh event, regular events and things like that as well?
That would that would be, I don't know the the programming of that. We're we're giving the opportunity, we're looking at a an event space as most ends would have. And maybe even shouldn't say event space. It's just an open facility as part of this inn. That could handle if there is a gathering. In what we're calling the barn.
If I may to be clear, i- if they have event space, um if it's accessory to the lodging, it doesn't require a special event. Special use permit. Um if it's customarily accessory and built of the scale where it's clearly accessory to and not the main thing. Then it doesn't need this other special permit.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Morton, I've uh want to talk about the conditions for a minute. Um we have uh. Uh quite a few conditions, thirteen conditions with a few subparts. Um has anything changed in these conditions since our last public hearing on this particular project?
No.
So this packet with these conditions has been available for review since the October meeting. Um hearing and uh and the uh for the commission and for the public. So it is my inclination not to read them into the record unless you have, except by reference to what's published. Um um unless you have any that you want to particularly focus on.
I don't have anything that have popped out in my mind as a special concern.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to read anything you'd like.
Um fine. Uh you can, commission members, any other questions or comments?
Is it, uh I just wanted to ask about, because it's not delineated here, or maybe I didn't find it, but uh. If the, again, water and sewer, is is that?
Happy, uh all utilities are available to the road for the site, uh with the exception of sewer. They're uh gonna be using the Hamilton Road Station or the Hamilton Station that is to be coming online, I think in the next eighteen months. There will be a small lift station on site to accommodate.
And that'll accommodate the hotel and all that.
Correct.
And then. Just, I'm gonna beat my usual dead horse and say, the hotel sounds huge to me, but so night sky ordinances, the amount of, the amount of. Lighting and so on required.
Sure, absolutely intended to meet all of the night sky requirements and ordinance provisions. Uh it is no larger than what is already at Serenby with respect to the inn. And the accompanying rooms that are around the inn that are also part of, right, by the farmhouse. Restaurant.
Those little cabins?
Yes.
There's not thirty cabins there?
There's not thirty, but they're also bigger than three hundred to four hundred and fifty feet.
Anything else? Do you have any, Mr. Lycie, is there any? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um if there's no further discussion, then uh do we have a motion to? We we're not closed the public hearing yet, closed the public comment, but thank you. So I never make mistakes. Um we have. Anyway, so do we have a motion that any of the commission members would like to make regarding uh approval uh with conditions?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass this with the recommended conditions.
Zoning and special use permit.
For both?
For both the special use permit and.
The rezon.
The rezoning, that's correct.
You have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Uh iron? Uh the motion carries um and we'll close this public hearing. Thank you. We have a third public hearing, and then we'll have a a new business item. The third public hearing is another uh public hearing. It it's a good, it's a second public hearing on the Merrill Park Project. And this is a recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone five hundred twenty-six acres. From the RL Rural District to the via Village District. It's five hundred twenty-six acres on seven parcels, seven parcels. Located with all four corners of Cochrane Mill Road and South Fulton Parkway, termed the Merrill Park Property. I'll go ahead and open the uh public hearing on this at this point. Um and uh. Mr. Morton, would you like to give a, we we've we've had a lot on this already, so.
That's right, another one we've talked about a lot, and you gave a pretty decent summary there. Um corner of South Fulton Parkway and Cochrane Mill Road, there's a a mile of frontage on each of those main roads. Also touches Wilkerson Mill Road and uh Rico Tatum. Um uh and the proposal is for two thousand residential units. The zoning requires. A minimum of three units per uh gross acre of site, and they have um proposed a higher amount, which means they would need to buy. Uh even more TDRs, which is um how uh land gets preserved in the city. Um and uh so that's um uh increases the amount of preservation that would be done. Um uh that's probably, well, so there it's gone through the DRI process, okay, and the neighbors, so they're just south of Cochrane Mill Park. They touch Cochrane Mill Park to the north. They touch another project in the city of Palmetto by the same developer to the south. To the east, they touch uh Wilkerson Mill Gardens, which is the rural district, and also um the Bear Creek Hamlet, which is a mixed-use hamlet. So everything around them is RL except for, everything in the city around them is RL except for that mixed-use hamlet. Um and uh uh the Palmetto project by the same developer has been through two DRIs. Uh one within the last year, and this project also has been through the DRI process, but we do not have of the two final reports. Um the DRI process, we do not have um one of them, the one from um Greta. Um final notice of decision. We have a draft, um which we believe is probably the final draft in your packet. Um but uh we don't have the final version yet, and in fact, um city council is not allowed to act on it. Um until, uh at risk of the city's qualified local government status, um without the the uh that uh process being complete. So um my understanding is we're still waiting, or Greta is still waiting for um final sign-off from um GDOT. And then we'll get it um as soon as that's done. Um we also note that there were no conditions attached in the packet. Um conditions are under review and revision, and um in the interest of not having a lot of conflicting versions floating around. Um didn't put that out there for this one. Um uh knowing also that the the NOD was a bit of a um a concern as far as. Swift action on it. So um we'll need uh we'll need some some conditions to address as well.
Thank you. Um before opening the public comment portion of this, uh how many do we have?
Um zero in support and two in opposition.
Well, let's stick with fifteen minutes, if that's all right. Um and we'll open the public comment portion of this uh of this hearing. Um now, the applicant may make at at the applicant's election, uh may make a presentation. I will note that we've. The applicant has made presentations several times before, has held two, voluntarily held two community outreach meetings. And made presentations. We've had presentations at this hearing as well, so it really is to the applicant's uh discretion about whether. Um he would like to make any uh introductory comments today or wait in for rebuttal.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. I did want to let you know, and Doug, thank you for letting them know, that uh since our last meeting, we've had two public outreaches, one here. Where we had thirty-five to forty people, uh good participation. Uh also, we had a second one this past Monday. Um I told my people we were gonna have between five people and probably thirty-five. We actually had to pull in more chairs. So we had probably uh forty, forty-two people. So good participation from the community. Uh obviously, lots of views, uh because it's a big project, we understand that. Uh the one thing I think it's important for the commission to understand, and I think you do, but also the public to understand. Is that this project complies completely with your current general. Is that this project complies, uh, completely with your current general plan. Uh, when the general plan area for a village, uh, this was planned to be a village. Fifteen to twenty years ago, when the whole concept of, uh, the city of Chattahoochee Hills originally, uh, came up. And actually, the author of that concept is with us, Steve Nygren. Um. And the other thing we did. Is. We complied with all of the requirements of the, uh, uniform development code. Uh, our original concept.
As you may even now recall. Was to have the village, one village, we still think that's the best concept. Uh, we realized that was not going to get passed probably on zoning.
Thank you. I've got a pretty loud voice, five kids, five kids, you have to have a loud voice. So, uh. We, we narrowed and eliminated these buffers to have one village, we realized there was opposition to that. So we changed it and we comply completely with. The, uh, UDC and the regulations for all of the buffers. Which in this case is about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy acres. The planning for this project was done, uh, by T S W, uh, Ryan Sniggrass is here on another project. Uh, he was the primary planner with Tom Walsh. Uh, they're the ones who I think, uh, wrote your code or was involved in the writing of the UDC. Uh, so it complies with your code. And we're very excited about the project, I particularly am excited, I'd like to get it done. And started, I'm kind of in the fourth quarter, as somebody might comment overtime. Uh, and I want to be able to market to the, uh, regional, national and international headquarters. Who I think need to be close to the airport would be special for the city of Chattahoochee Hills, uh, and for this project. Uh, we will have all in here in the retail portion, the mixed use portion. Uh, we'll have all of the services needed for. The entire, uh, city, which will complement what's going on at Serenby. Uh, and what you're now approving at some of the other, uh, projects and, uh. Uh, other projects that you're approving. So happy to answer any questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Chandler?
Cokie Ellery?
Are these, uh, these are?
Opposition.
Opposition, no one else in, in favor?
No, sir.
Okay.
Cokie Ellery?
Thank you, Cokie Ellery, seventy-five hundred Old Rico Roads. I'm gonna share with you guys some comments that I made with the city council, but I also have some additional comments. First of all, thanks a lot to everyone for your hard work to make Chattahoochee Hill country what it is today. Kelly, my wife and I spent our first anniversary at the end of Serenby in February of twenty fifteen. We lived in Atlanta and craved peace and calm. And we found it here, it's awesome here. So we got some land and we built on a gravel road and it's really beautiful. The comprehensive plan that some of you have been working on for almost twenty years, I feel is development genius. And assures that our land will remain beautiful. But the development plan for our very first village, which we're discussing tonight. Is complex, as you know, and needs more time for review. I've spoken. Personally to many, many of our citizens. And they all agree. Please. Take your time. By the way, this is your timeline, it's not Mr. Merrill's timeline. This is a long game. With impact that will last for the rest of time, literally. Please stick to your guns and hold the line on the conditions that you require for acceptance. Please. Look harder. And consider more other important conditions, some which require jurisdiction. Over and cooperation with Palmetto City zoning. One example is Cockermill Road, our scenic byway with parts that run through Chat Hills and other parts that run through the city of Palmetto. Merrill Park has plans in both. Imagine in that beautiful patch of woods just beyond Rico Tatum on Cockermill Road. Literally lodged between two Chattahoochee Hills parcels of land. A large transit station and a bus stop. With a multi-acre park and ride parking lot. And no buffer right there alongside our scenic byway. That's what Mr. Merrill wants for us, it's there in his plan, look at it. You can't stand by and let this happen. Another example. The details I provided to you, to Mr. Lightsey. And Mr. Peak. In the part of Merrill Park Palmetto that sharply cuts into our city. More than ten large driveways from multi-home streets empty onto our gravel roads, Rico Tatum. And Atlanta Noonan. Some literally feet away from our city line. That is so disrespectful to our city. You can't stand by and let this happen. One more example. The details I provided to you guys. Also, in the part of Merrill Park Palmetto that sharply cuts into our city. Our gravel roads, Rico Tatum and Atlanta Noonan, both wind in and out of Chat Hills and Palmetto. Merrill Park is patchworked onto roadway touching both cities. So what is the joint city plan to ensure public safety there? And ongoing maintenance? To keep our city safe. What's the plan? There's been no plan stated. You gotta step in and keep this city safe. There are a lot of other examples. The bottom line here is this. Your decisions are our decisions. Please make them wisely. And thank you so much for protecting our city.
Thank you, sir.
Elroy Windsor?
Good evening, I am Elroy Windsor, I live at sixty-five eighty-five Jenkins Road near this property. I appreciate the applicant putting out, uh, public information sessions, I was unable to attend any previous ones. But I have reviewed the application as well as the materials provided in the packet, and I have serious concerns. Being a resident who lives near this area. I have concerns about the light pollution, comments that have been brought up earlier. Um, of such a massive project. And to be clear, this first village is a monster, this is a massive development that will change the character of this city. That I moved to recently because of what a previous resident described earlier. The zoning laws that we have here is why I chose to live in Chattahoochee Hills a year and a half ago. Instead of Fairburn, in Fairburn, I could live on a ten acre parcel of land surrounded by monsters like what is being proposed. And I chose not to live there because I wanted what this city's character has to offer us. I understand that development is necessary, I understand that revenue is needed. But this kind of project, this massive pro- project on four corners of the intersection of South Fulton and Cockermill. Is much too much. And if we look at how it butts up against our park. That park is going to be severely impacted, there's no way it won't with two thousand residences in this space as well as all of the commercial, um. Uh, units as part of this parcel. The other thing I want to add is that I read the. Applicant's representative, um, that their, their attorney's letter in the packet, I found it threatening. I think that you have a clear outline of how you can expect the city to be sued, or at least threatened to be sued. Which is an inappropriate way to go about proposing new development. We don't need to be threatened to hear about how you are going to be held accountable for violating various supposed constitutional rights of development. Um, that is not the way to go about doing friendly business here, thank you for your time and for all your hard work.
Thank you, ma'am. Chandler?
That's all.
That's it? No other comments?
Yes, sir.
Then the, uh, public comment period.
There's eleven minutes and thirty seconds left.
Excuse me, pardon me, uh, does the applicant wish to, um, address any of these comments? Thank you, um, the, uh. Then, uh, we'll close the, uh, public comment portion of this, uh, public hearing and move to the commission deliberations. Um, at which point we can, the commission may ask questions of. The applicant or, uh, of the city, um, and let me just start, uh. Let's go back to conditions, Mr. Morton, we're, we're, we don't have conditions in this packet.
That's correct.
We had conditions the last time at our, at our previous public. Hearing, but we don't have them now, and I saw conditions in the city council packet from last week.
That's correct.
From the first read, but they're no longer, and so, um, they are, uh, uh, they're not finalized at this point, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct, that's correct, some of them will deal with the information in the N O D, the. Differences between the, the planning commission conditions and the city council conditions were an attempt to begin to incorporate what we expected in the N O D, but of course, we still don't have that. Um, that's a part of it, there are other revisions that, uh, uh, are taking place. Uh, to the, to that, those, to that draft of the conditions.
And, and without the N O D, you had mentioned that the city council can't act without putting in jeopardy. Please, go ahead.
That's correct, yeah, qualified local government status, that's right, we have to wait for the, um, uh, D R I process to, to wrap up, which means getting both of the reports.
Um. Uh, it, it, the. Commission members are absolutely welcome to make any comments, discussions they want. From my standpoint, it doesn't seem like we're in a position to be able to act, uh, tonight, but. Um. If, if, if that's the sense of the commission, then, uh, we do have something, I, I. Go ahead.
Question, yes, so if we cannot act tonight in the. This defer table. The next step would be what? Would we get another? Go with this?
That's right, that's right, so you have ninety days from the first public hearing, which was. A month and, what, four days ago, so.
We would, we'd have to, we have to make a decision, if we're gonna make a decision, otherwise it's kind of a. Man, decision gets made for us, um, by, by, uh, January, um, before January twelfth. Okay, or before January thirteen, um. Uh, I think what we can do this time, and advice of the city attorney, is we can not close this public hearing, but we can continue it. Uh, we can close the public hearing and have another public hearing, or we simply keep this one open to continue it. And based on the city attorney's advice, I think that may be the best approach, unless there are questions or anyone would like to discuss it.
Why is that, and what's the distinction?
It saves some. Mr. Morton, please?
Yeah, wear and tear on the staff, it, it's a matter of whether it has to be advertised again or not. Um, if you think that you want the future action to be advertised. Thirty-six signs on the right of way and a bunch of letters and, uh, advertising in the Noonan Times Herald, then don't do that. Um, but if you don't think it needs to be advertised again, uh, then that's the way to go.
But the public information, the packet and presumably the final N O D, if it comes in at time, will be available for review on the city's website.
That's right.
Just as they always are.
We'll certainly put it all out there, um, uh, yeah, it'll be on the agenda, it's normally, you know, posted like a normal meeting and normal meeting materials. Um, but, but it wouldn't require those three, those three public notice requirements for a public hearing. Wouldn't be required if it's continued.
Uh, uh, it's my understanding we would open it back up for more public comments. But, uh, continued public comment.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't have a recommendation or about today.
Well, yes, we would have a, we would have a recommendation, um, on, on the fifth approach, which would be to defer it again to. Uh, well, whatever, but I would say to the December meeting, um, as a continuation of this public hearing.
Make sure we use the right language.
Yes, Mr. Peak, do you have a possible, uh?
And because we don't have the necessary information, I want to make a motion that we, this, uh, deferment be continued to the next planning commission meeting, which I believe is December fourteen. Is that correct, fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion.
Um, discussion on the motion, or is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion at this point, I know, but we know without discussion, so. Um, if, if no discussion, then, uh, let's, um, all those in favor of this motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The motion carries. That's, public hearing is closed. On that item, which brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is a. Recommendation, this is not a public hearing, this is a recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone five hundred twenty-six, I'm sorry. It's Groundhog Day, I think, but, no, this is, this is. This is the Augusta Lane preliminary plat, uh, Mr. Morton, would you introduce that?
That's right, so, um, planning commission, uh, has a responsibility to approve preliminary plats, which is a step in the land development process. Uh, that comes before the actual turning of dirt and before the final plat, which actually creates the lots as a actual legal, um, entity. Uh, this one is a pretty many, uh, pretty minor, uh, preliminary plat, it just proposes four half acre lots, um, one of them is just a little bit bigger than half an acre. Three half acre lots and one that's a little bigger, and an extension of Augusta Lane, which is an unpaved, uh, road in, uh, Serenby. It was rezoned as a part of the Garnet Ridge, uh, rezoning. And, um, uh, the proposed preliminary plat, um, matches the, uh, concept plan, uh, pretty closely. Lots are shaped a little differently, they, um, moved a couple of things to make sure that they met the, the buffering requirements, um, which, um. Uh, uh, actually, that's just, uh, sorry, that's a change from the first draft of the plat to the second draft of a plat. But, um, they meet the buffer requirements, uh, the lots are generally, uh, quite close to where they were shown in the concept plan. Um, the road, instead of running between two of the last runs to the south of all of them, but that's a pretty minor, um, uh, a pretty minor change, so. Um, it complies with, uh, uh, matches the concept plan, which is approved by council and staff recommends approval.
Uh, thank you, uh, if the applicant would like to make a statement, uh, so it's your option. So, uh, does the commission have any questions about this? I think Mike's presentation is quite clear, any questions or comments? No. Then let's entertain a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, proposed preliminary plat, and is there's, if that's a motion that anyone would like to, would like to make.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, play, please say aye. Aye, all opposed? The motion carries. So, that was new business, um. Mr. Morton, Ms. Chandler, do you have any staff reports?
No, I just, you got the planning, the, uh, building permit numbers in, in front of you, if you want to run through them, we can, um, uh. Six new homes this month, seven new homes, uh, a, a year ago in October, um, generally activities, uh, has been down, um. If you have questions, happy to answer, but that's it.
Thank you, um, I think we're at the point of adjourning, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.